In the nursing positions where we may have nurse or nurse assistants, health assistants, rather, that can't return to their work, so temps.
Does the Douglas County Health Department have the capacity? I mean, you're talking about an entire school district. You're talking about an entire school district, Doc. I mean, not to put you in a...
Do you want me to speak on behalf of the Douglas County Health Department?
No, but I think that is something that I think we have to take...
We certainly anticipate that we needed to be a robust and vigorous support to them, so that's why we added people to the team. We realize there's a lot of phone calls that need to be made. School administration at whatever the site is will certainly be called in to support. So, and if we need to augment that team further, Mr. Wakefield and his team have already discussed the fact that they know that that team will need to probably get a little larger.
Mrs. Gadding, thank you, Doctor.
I have a question on the health side as far as thermometers and are we taking temperatures at school?
We are not taking temperatures at school. We were not, and we were, when we asked our health providers, they did not feel that, based on the, on the fact that most children are asymptomatic, they didn't feel that that was going to yield the, yield what we needed. So, but they do feel like families need to do that. So, we had a philanthropist who generously donated monies to make sure that our families will have thermometers. And those are already distributed by, or they're being distributed? They're rolling out, they're already here. I know that whoever the vendor was, was able to get them very, very quickly, so.
Then we just vote, okay. We just voted on, okay, that's fine. Ms. Ryan?
With the contact tracing team, like, how many people do we already have in place for that? Because we know that contract, contact tracing in our community is so hard because it's so, right, out of control. So, how are we gonna do that effectively when it's community and the school? And with how many people?
I can't speak for, for the Health Department. I can tell you internally, we've wanted to augment our team, so it's not just one individual, but a team of individuals. And then obviously, we work with our schools. In many cases, we have to bring in our bilingual liaisons to work with our families, but that's the way we're going to, to do that.
Thank you. Ms. Cassidy?
Thought you were going to miss Snite first.
Everybody gets to go once and then...
Just a quick question. On the flip side then, is the procedure gonna be the same if, let's say, a parent contact, contracts COVID and has to call the school and say, "I just found out I have COVID," and they have a child at four different schools? Same type of procedure?
Same type of procedure. We've had that this summer too, with parents contracting COVID and being notified, and the children being sent into quarantine. Douglas County Health works with us. Matter of fact, in most of those cases, they've contacted us and say, "We've got a parent, whatever, the student is here. Children need to go into quarantine for however many days that they deem." And I will tell you, every time, it's not, they don't, it's not necessarily 14. They tell us, you know, it's till this date or whatever, and we go in, you know, we, and I guess that's based on whenever the person, whatever measures they use. We are on the receiving end of the information about when the child, the quarantine will be, is over.
I have one more question. I had a parent ask today about busing, and I know we're gonna cover busing, but will temperatures be taken at all on buses?
Temperatures will be taken, should be taken by parents. And that's a part of our parent, parent, I guess, compact with trying to get through the, this time together, is that we need their help. We need their support in a lot of different ways. We need them to keep their children home. Everybody here who's a parent, everybody here knows the Tylenol trick of giving your kid Tylenol so he can go to work. And we can't do that. You know, it's, it's, it's not, you know, we're dealing with something that's very, very different. And we're going to need for them to not just stay home when they're sick. This is very different. They have to stay home if anybody in the household is sick. And that is a very different standard than what families have been accustomed to. And we know that we're going to have to continually do reminders about that to make sure that families adhere to that, and then to continually talk about the collectivist effort that's going to be needed for us to see whether or not we can get back to approach a, whatever that new normal is.
Mr. Pearlman?
I have a couple of questions. So, when talking about one student, two, or four, or five, or more, is that in the aggregate or is that at one time?
That's at each individual school or program.
That's not what I'm asking. I'm asking, say, at the school where my children go to school, on day one, there's one student, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Then everything miraculously is great for 30 days, and then there are, there's one more. Are we still at one, or now we're at two to four?
It's instances, and it's a really good question.
It's an aggregate then?
Yes, well, well...
Over time?
Not necessarily. So, we would actually, we would work with Douglas County Health, because in the example that you just gave, Mr. Pearlman, it's a great example, and we wish it would, that would be what we were dealing with. But if we had one student on August 12th, right, and then we don't have, and we would deal with that with what the one-student protocol calls for. And then in a month, we had one student. We would do that one protocol. You see what I'm saying? When we, when we start to see a pattern, that's when we would, that's when we would probably, we would have to take some different actions. The, you know, when we think about multiple sites, what that will cause us, you know, causes all kinds of things. If you, if you lose the person, if you, if you're hiring bus drivers and you lose the person who's training your bus drivers, let's say, for example, because they, you know, they have to quarantine, you've got, you know, it's a whole different situation than if you, you know, if you just, you know, lose a, a person who, who can't, who has to be quarantined. So, the circumstances will, we'll have to monitor, we have to be on top of it. I will tell you, we're on top, all day, every day is COVID, sad to say, in terms of monitoring and figuring out what's going on, because we do wanna return safely and responsibly. We, you know, we are gonna continue. This board is receiving regular updates from me about when we have something that's going on with our young people, as you did earlier today. And, you know, we're gonna continue to do that. And if we see something that we need to make sure that, first of all, that you are aware of, but, you know, working with Douglas County, we will, you know, take this, take the steps that we need to take. And if we need to go to a different model of learning, then we will transition to a different model of learning. We're gonna try to get school open next week. And right now, it appears we might be able to do that, but we're gonna continue to, you know, to keep, to keep monitoring and see what's, see what's going on. What we don't have control, we can, we can only have the inform, the information inside of our school district, the information that we have. Everything else is externally produced, and we have to depend on the integrity of it as we receive it.
A few more questions. If a student or staff or teacher is tested because they're concerned they may have the virus, is it recommended that they stay home and wait for the test?
We, again, we've had several of those, so we, it depends on what the advice is from, they get advice from their physician and they get advice from Douglas County Health. And so typically, it's stay at home until, all the ones that I read today said, "Stay at home until you get the results."
Okay. And what about the return to the classroom?
Those are, they will share with a person the date, usually when they can return. Once they, after they get the result, they will share with them when, when they can return.
So, is there a requirement that they test negative?
You, I do not know the answer to that. Douglas County has been giving us the, telling us when people can, can return, or their physician has been telling us when they can return. What the standard for return is, is not something that we, is not something that we control as a school district. We depend on the physician or the Health Department telling us that the person is clear to return.
I guess I'm just concerned of, and I, look, I know this is all...
It's okay.
It's all new, right?
It's okay.
But my question is about grading. How on earth can we grade? 'Cause, you know what I mean? We're gonna have students in school, through no fault of their own, they're gonna be home for 12 days after, you know what I mean? It's all impossible.
We feel strongly that we need to continue to give kids feedback about their work and that we are going to be grading. And obviously, we are compassionate, and we know how to give children makeup work and that thing, that sort of thing. But I know that that was one thing from the spring that we know, that we really feel we needed an upgrade on. But we weren't, we weren't positioned in the spring to ensure that we had equity for our young people. We're in a different spot right now, and we certainly have the expectation that children are gonna get that work, that when they're in school, they're going to do it, and then when they're home and turn it in to take attendance and all of those things, and to continue on as, and I say normally, as possible with our expectations about what they're, about their schoolwork.
I will say, you know, it's different to say you're grading versus giving grades to give grades. I get that, so I think it's important to grade the work. You've been asked this question a lot. I just haven't heard it asked for a while. What about attendance? It's just, I mean...
We are gonna take attendance. There is, I know that Mrs. Utterback spoke about that the last time. There is an opportunity in Infinite Campus to, to take attendance, so we will be monitoring attendance.
Okay. I think my final question for now is, if a student in a classroom, and I guess I'm just thinking for elementary, 'cause it's probably more simple, why not just tell everyone in the class that a student has tested positive?
Well, we have privacy laws, and we, like I said, we've done this a lot when we have whooping cough or, and so the Health Department kinda helps, gives us a guide and lets us know who needs to be notified. We don't, we don't give out students' names. We just say, "You've been exposed and you will need to quarantine for however many days based on your level of exposure." But we certainly would not give out, I know that was a concern of Ms. Snite earlier. We certainly would not be giving out students' names, and we certainly would be respecting the privacy of our young people. I'm not saying people don't figure it out, but I'm just saying that that's not something that would not be...
But how could that work if we're doing contact tracing? You necessarily would be giving out the name.
No, we wouldn't, not necessarily. We would say, who, who sat, we ask the teacher, who sat on either side of the, of the individual?
Right, that's giving the name.
Right, we wouldn't give them the name. The teacher would, should know who sat on either, either side of the individual, and that person would be contacted to say, "You have been exposed, you need to quarantine", based on the information that the teacher would provide.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, I mean, the deduction that would lead to the name, wouldn't it be very complicated? But, so, I mean, I guess, and I've always, I, you know, HIPAA is probably the, like, most least, and we have a lawyer in the room, I don't know, HIPAA is probably the most, like, confused law in America, because I don't believe that the school district is subject to it. We can share that information.
No, we, I will tell you, we are subject to it, and we certainly respect students' privacy at all times.
I, I don't believe so, because the district is not a healthcare provider, but I, I would just prefer that the whole class be notified, and not the name, but, I'm telling you, if someone in my daughter's class has it, I wanna know. I'm just telling you how it is.
I made a very similar statement at a Health Department, at a meeting, and we were assured that we would get the information that we need for the people that, that need to be notified. We did talk about a, a general notification and a more specific notification, which would involve a contact trace. And the Health Department was, that, the last, we spoke with them, which is, I guess, the end of last week, 'cause it's only Tuesday, they were contemplating those two different things. So, for example, a low, kind of a low-risk, you were in the classroom, and a, a contact trace, which be, would be a, a much more specific and a much more direct notification that you need to quarantine. Does that make sense? So, if you got, if you got a notification that there's a case in your school, right, is one thing, but it's different from if you are contacted, "Mr. Pearlman, your, your children were in this room, they need to quarantine." So, we, we talked about that, and there was, there was some back and forth, and we're awaiting, I guess, with school starting, a, when they're going to let us know which way they're going to go with that, because that's something that was asked by not just me, but several superintendents. We sit on a call, I sit on a call every Thursday with the Metro Superintendent, and I would say every, to a person, we all agree that that would be something that parents would want.
Right, and, and the events over the past five days have changed the way I view those sorts of things, not from the school district. I know we've been, you in particular and your team have been the leaders on this, but what has happened over the last five days makes me concerned about the level of information that's being shared for political reasons. So, I, it's just, I know the school district's doing all it can, so that's all.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Crowe.
Thank you.
One second, please, I have questions. Ms., Mrs. Crackey?
I was, as I was listening to the bus and the journey on the bus and then getting on the bus, it could be likely that if they're checked, because they may not have been checked at home, we're not gonna be assured that all of those families are gonna check that child before they're coming in. So, let's assume they weren't checked, they got on the bus, nobody checked them, they were now exposing all those children perhaps on that bus. And so I wonder if there's a possibility that someone can check them as they're getting on the bus. It seems like a more secure time. And then when we talked about when they're done with it or they don't have it anymore, are we really going to have them have a Health Department piece of paper coming back in, say they were clear? Or how do we know they're even gonna go to the Health Department?
We would expect if they have a positive case, that they would have seen a physician at the, at the, at the minimum to have a release to come, to come back, or once the Health Department is, is aware of their condition, letting us know when they'd be clear to come back. That has happened already, Mrs. Crackey, throughout the summer. But not at this, not at, not at the scale of everybody being back in school.
And I mean, with all the buses and all the children and all the checking, I'm worried about how much checking will be done before they're all exposing other people. It's just, I'm worried about...
I understand, Mrs. Crackey. Any other questions concerning this piece here? Ms. Snite, go ahead.
So, I just thought about this. Are we, have we identified families that have members in high-risk groups? And if we have, do we have, like, I guess, communication channels to, like, inform those families if they may be impacted? That's one question I have.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your question, Ms. Snite?
I, I think a lot about the intergenerational family, so I'm wondering, have we OPS identified families that have members in those high-risk groups? And then if so, like, communication channels to, like, inform those families if they may be impacted?
We have not, we have not polled families to understand who is living in their households in regards to COVID.
Okay. So then, I guess, the next question I have is really around probably messaging, and so I guess I'm wondering, what type of messaging do we have for the parents on the importance of monitoring for and responding to symptoms at home? Because we're not gonna be able to check on the bus, well, we're not checking on the bus, not checking in school, and I, I understand that concern, Mrs. Crackey, so I'm just wondering, and I understand also that the community can play a part in this. I'm just wondering what type of messaging we do have, again, around the importance of monitoring and responding to symptoms at home.
Mr. Maswell's gonna talk about the communication things that we've sent out.
Good evening, Ms. Snite, members of the board. Thank you for the chance to talk about this. We have restarted our weekly communications with families and all staff throughout the district, and we're calling it our Health and Safety Newsletter, where we are reminding families of precautions they need to be taking at home, the symptoms they need to be watching for, and as Dr. Logan shared, the highest precaution, that if anyone in the home is sick or feeling ill, everyone in the home needs to stay home. So, that will be part of our presence on the website, weekly messages to families, social media updates, regular communication throughout the year.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm also still looking at my paper for other questions. I appreciate that. I guess when I'm thinking about attendance, and this is probably something for future maybe, I'm just thinking for school daily attendance, maybe if we can even use that and compare it with attendance rates pre-COVID, because I think there's an opportunity to identify gaps for schools, for classes, by a bunch of different dimensions, including, like, disability, location, et cetera. Just something I've been thinking about. And then I guess I would say there's also in my mind, opportunity to collect feedback from the young people, caregivers and teachers on school closure, if it hasn't already been done, because I know, Dr. Logan, you're very futuristic, and I appreciate that very much about you. But collecting feedback from them on their school closure experience and any supports received for learning and well-being, and maybe using that feedback for future planning. So, just, that's a thought as well. Thank you. Thank you.
We actually did that work in April, so I can have, so we would be prepared for the training that we offered to teachers in May and this week, so, Mr. Maswell?
We did send out a comprehensive survey with our partners in research, and Dr. Crowe can speak to their end of it. But we really wanted and valued that feedback from our families, from our staff, from our students themselves, and so that information was gathered. It absolutely guided our communications and outreach efforts. We spent a significant amount of time researching experiences in communities similar to ours throughout the country, as Dr. Logan mentioned, to adapt some of our multilingual outreach in the year to come and support. So, absolutely, that data was collected both locally and reviewed nationally to make sure we could give the best possible supports to our staff, students and families in the time to come.
Okay. Do there any other questions, Ms. Snite?
Thank you, Dr. Crowe.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any other questions? Ms. Scotty?
Well, I'm, I'm just curious, so are we going on to the presentation of other things, right? Okay, so I think that's a good idea.
Are we going on?
Yep, we are. To the transportation. Mr. Salas?
I, I did have another question. This, but I don't even think we covered in the other part. I'll just ask it now. A parent has been told, or what happens to a student that shows up to school after we told them, their family, they cannot come to school because they've been in contact, and that student still shows up to school that day. I mean, it's not like we're locking the doors and saying, "You can't come in."
So, a student that should be quarantining shows up...
Should be quarantining, you know, parent has to work there, they, they still drop that kid off and that kid shows up at school.
Again, that's also happened. So, we would contact the family and make arrangements for the child to go home. If the child's supposed to be quarantined, we would isolate the child in our isolation area in the school. Each school, each, each school has been asked to have an isolation area, similar to when we had H1N1 in 2009.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions on this topic?
I guess I have a question. So, we're talking about a, a student or staff has been told, you know, you should stay home for seven days, 15 days, or what have you. I just, I don't really like the honor system like that, and first of all, there's no way the County Health Department would know that, 'cause from, I think by this point, most people in this room know people who've had this, and some people have it for six days, some people have it for 40. So, the Health Department is useless in that regard. I'm sorry, they are. They can't tell someone, "Stay home for 14 days." It's, that's an impossible thing. It would take up multiple tests or trips to a physician to know that. So, I guess I'm still looking for an answer on how do we know when a student can come back?
We have children, we've had children with other communicable diseases where they've either, they've had to have a release to come back. A doctor's note, in this case, because of the interplay with the Health Department, we inject them, because they have been telling us when a child can quar, how long a person might have to quarantine. So, for example, the one that I sent earlier today was a certain date that those children have to be quarantined until. That's the way that we are tracking it, and there are adults who are aware when those children should be showing, should be returning to, to engage. So, that's the way that we will have to, to do it. The scale is just going to be different. This is going to be a massive scale when you think about how many people could be impacted by just one quarantine. So, I don't, with, I'm, I think that, what I read into your question is scale, and it is going to be, you know, school, school efforts to make sure that we can know and understand when children can return.
And I'm assuming we have protocols on...
We have a protocol for our protocols.
A proto, that's what I'm saying. I know I was watching the legislative chambers, there's a person that showed up at a meeting that was positive of COVID, and they had to shut down. I'm assuming we have a protocol for that as well.
Yeah. And if we get to a point where we're at a critical juncture, we'll, you'll be, the board will know, and we'll, we may have to, we, we know, may have to have different decisions. But right now, this is where we are.
Understand. Last two questions for board members on this topic, Mrs. Crackey?
I was thinking, you should be on.
Is your mic on?
It, uh, it's on.
There we go.
There we go. So, when they're at home, and we have identified that they have COVID or they are not coming to school because of others or whatever they're doing at home, are we going to immediately get them pushed into remote, because they're probably feeling good enough at times during the day, et cetera, to keep up with something like that? So, that wouldn't impact their education that much? Is, have you thought of that?
The, it would be similar to an absence they would have at any other time during the school year. They would receive work from their, from their teacher.
Will that be happening then, if they're at home, just suddenly, tomorrow, I'm at home, sick?
Well, they certainly would be communicating with their, with their teacher.
They'll have the iPads as well, connectivity. Ms. Ryan?
Just listening to all of this, I'm, I'm a little bit frustrated, because I do think that we're at a critical point already, and we just are. So, I don't, I, I appreciate all the work that you guys are putting into this. I just think that, that we have to be honest with ourselves. This isn't like another communicable disease. The rate is hot, like, the close proximity, like, we just, I'm frustrated. And I just needed to say that, 'cause I know that that's on the minds of a lot of people in this room right now.
Well, imagine you had to orchestrate this whole thing, your frustration.
And that's not what I'm saying. I said in my board comment that I admire everything that you've done, and I just reiterated it there.
No, I, no, I didn't take it, I didn't take it in a bad way. I just, am just multiplying at times of 1,000, and, you know, we've got two choices. And so, you know, at this point, we're going to try to move forward and have, you know, move forward and see how we do. And if we need to make a different decision, I have not been shy about making any kind of decision that needs to be made, and, you know, sharing it with the board and us moving forward. It's just not, I'm not afraid. And so if another decision has to be made, then another decision has to be made.
Thank you, Dr. Crowe.
Thank you.
Who's next? Mr. Salas. Oh, man. Say it again? Oh, go, all right. Good evening. Dr. Logan will be back.
Good evening. The student transportation de...
The Student Transportation Department would like to take this time to update you on the procedures and expectations that have been put into place to prepare students for a safe and responsible return to school while riding on the school bus. Currently, the district has four contracted transportation vendors. In order to ensure all contracted vehicles will be clean, and that safety steps are followed in an appropriate manner, we have met with each organization on procedures and provided the following supplies for each contracted vehicle: hand sanitizer, gloves, spare face coverings for students, district-approved disinfectant, decals for designated seats on the bus as necessary, and decals on the step risers that state, "Be safe, be responsible." Each year, approximately two weeks prior to the start of the school year, Student Transportation sends out letters to families notifying them of their child's stop location and bus arrival time. This letter also includes student expectations and guidelines while riding the bus. This year, we have added additional information to student expectations that specifically relates to safely boarding the bus, and steps that will assist students in remaining safe throughout the ride. We have also posted a video to the transportation website that displays boarding and cleaning procedures. We understand that there may be days that a student inadvertently boards a bus on the day that is not assigned to them according to the 3-2 model. Drivers and aides will be expected to transport all students who arrive at the bus stops daily as a safety precaution. Once a student has arrived at school, Student Transportation will work directly with building administration to get the student back home safely. While receiving transportation services, students will be expected to follow the following guidelines. Prior to boarding the bus, students should complete a health assessment daily with their parent prior to riding the bus. Students should have a required PPE face covering on before boarding the bus. Whenever possible, students should practice social distancing at the bus stop. When boarding the bus, students must put on face covering and maintain an arms-length distance before stepping onto the bus, waiting for the student in front to reach the top step of the bus before boarding. Students from the same household may be asked to share the same seats. While on the bus, hand sanitizer will be available for use at the top step. Students should proceed to the back of the bus and sit in the first available designated seat. Students are expected to wear their face covering throughout the entire ride. Exiting the bus, students will unload front to back, right to left, and everyone will remain seated until directed by the driver to exit. The bus driver will direct students when it is safe to exit. Once students have exited the bus, they will follow the direction of the school building staff. In terms of enhanced cleaning procedures, after all students have exited the bus, the driver will then start the process for the child's safety check procedure. Once the child's safety check procedure has been completed, the driver will then start the disinfectant process. The driver will spray seats with the district-approved disinfectant after each run throughout the day. At the end of the day, the driver will do a more thorough cleaning process of spraying and wiping down all high-touch surfaces. This concludes the Student Transportation update. We look forward to a safe and responsible school year.
Thank you, Mr. Salas.
Thank you.
I have, I'll have a couple of questions before I pass it to the other board members. Are you doing, are we doing a training for students before they get on the bus, on what they're supposed to be doing for proper protocol?
There has been the proper protocol sent to the students in their letter.
Okay. Oh, so, I know there was a thing of social distancing at the bus stop, that is, it's very admirable to believe that students would do that, but if a student, a parent has emailed me, a student not supposed to come to school, they show up on the bus, is there another person on the bus to make sure that student X doesn't show up if you only have half the students riding each?
If we only have half the students, and we have a student who shows up on a day that they should not, that student would still be allowed to ride the bus? And then once we get them to school, we will work with building administration to get the students back home safely, and we allow all of them to get on the bus, just because as a safety precaution, if we send them back home, their parents may already be going to work, the doors may be locked, et cetera.
If a student's sick and supposed to stay home, would the bus driver know if this student's not supposed to be on the bus, and there's, we still put the sick student on the bus and take them to school?
At any given time, if there's a student at a stop, we would transport them there, and then we would work with the school.
So we would transport a kid that potentially had exposure with other kids? The bus driver wouldn't know?
If that driver?
So nobody on the bus would know, until, okay.
I'm sorry.
No, there's nothing, I mean, here's the thing, like, everyone, we're all going down this together, so it's moving forward together, and this is new for everyone, so it's just really trying to understand the complexity of a lot of these scenarios. Mrs. Godding, and then Mr. Smith.
So I guess one of the things that bus drivers who have reached out to me earlier talked about was training, so do you feel like they've been given all these different scenarios, and they know what to do in any given situation, assuming, I mean, I know that you can't come up with every scenario.
Yeah, it's a fluid situation, and we have monthly safety meetings, and so we will continue to offer updated training as we get new scenarios that approach us, but it will be ongoing training that we will do with all our drivers and aides, as well as our contracted providers.
But as of the first day of school next week, we've had a training that covers many of these COVID issues, correct?
Yes, we discussed and went over it in our orientation, and as the drivers start coming back on site, obviously, we didn't have a chance to meet with them in a one-on-one capacity as we normally would, but as they get back onto the building, we will continue the training process with them.
And kind of to piggyback off of what Mr. Snow said, if we discover that there's a pickup location that doesn't allow for quality social distancing, if that really is going to happen, which we hope it will, or there's a location near a sex offender or something like that, are we fluid enough to be able to change those pickup locations and notify parents?
So currently, we do change locations if we are aware of a sex offender. In terms of stops where students will or will not be able to practice social distancing, that will be something that's ongoing, I can't say that we could change stops that quick based off of that. We will hope the students would practice it, and as time goes on, hopefully, the culture will get them adjusted to doing that.
Right, okay, very good, thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Not necessarily a question for you, but maybe us together, so should transportation get a list of those students who may have to be quarantined, or an address or a stop where it should be, you know, Ricky shouldn't get on the bus today because his family is part of a quarantine, so they know not to let Ricky on the bus on that day?
I was going to say, Mr. Smith, bless your heart, but I certainly appreciate the sentiment. The issue is that we're going to have to work with our families to make sure they don't bring them, and don't send, send children, and a bigger issue, I still going to keep saying it, is families who have people sick in the home, the child seems well, they want to send the child. That is going to be our bigger, that's going to be a big rock for us throughout this pandemic, especially since children don't seem to get, many children, not all, because we certainly know that some do get very, very ill, or don't appear to be as ill, and you know the rest better than I do, so, thank you.
Mrs. Cassidy?
Thank you. So, I'm sitting here listening to this, and I'm getting a little petrified and terrified. I have a six-year-old that's going to sit on a bus, and I've had all my kids on a bus, and kids are bad on buses. Kids are not great on buses, I mean, my kids come home and they're telling me stories about this one standing up, and this one, you know. So, you mentioned, obviously, the drivers are going to have training, are they going to do any kind of training with the students on the bus, like, any kind of?
With the students?
With the students that are going to be getting on the bus, are they going to be doing any kind of little?
Usually, we use staff, for example, when we put together a video that's on the website, we use staff, the server.
Okay, so it's a video?
Yes, there is.
Okay, I think I misunderstood that part, and then you also said that on the transportation paperwork that we're getting?
Yes.
Which I believe I got mine today?
Yes.
That also lays out?
The expectations, yes.
Okay. Will the drivers, and this kind of goes with Mr. Smith, will the drivers have, like, a manifest of, let's say they're picking up 25 kids on their bus, will they have a manifest that says, Johnny's only on the bus Monday, Tuesday? Will they know at all what students are, what days, based on last names, or will they just, like you said, if they, if a child gets on at the wrong time, wrong day, they'll still take them to school?
Yes, what will happen is we will run the routes as normal.
Okay.
So the bus will go to the stop every day.
So they won't be paying attention to any type of list of, this is my 14 that come today, and this is my, okay, too much for them to handle, I'm assuming? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salas.
Thank you. Mr. Proman, sorry, we were exchanging notes, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Salas. First of all, thank you to you and your team, it's one of the things I'm amazed at with the public schools, the work that goes into the transportation system. My question, any update to the app? I know it's kind of been in full swing, last time we spoke, is any news on that, that lets riders know how far away the bus is? Here comes the bus app.
Here comes the bus. So yes, last year, we started full swing with the regular education buses, we will do it again for regular education. We had started having conversations to start the process for special education. At this time, because of the pandemic, obviously, we did not get to do any demoing last year, as well as the company right now is a few months behind, just because their manufacturer was shut down, so once that gets back up and we get that equipment in, we'll start working for the special ed side this year.
So is that K-12 at this point, has access to it?
Yes, regular education.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Mrs. Crackey, did you have a question? Ms. Ryan? Ms. Snipe? All righty, thank you, Mr. Salas. Thank you. All righty. I think our next presenter is, I can't see under the face mask, and I don't have my glasses on, because it fogs up with this.
I'm Georgia Brazewitter, Shirley Chilton Coordinator.
Welcome, welcome.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much.
See if it fogged up my glasses.
Nice to see everybody again. Well, I want to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to give you some updates on early childhood education for the 2021 school year. As we prepare for the start of school, I just want to remind you all that early childhood will be following the same Family 3-2 schedule, so all early childhood students will follow the same Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday, and alternate Wednesday schedule as K-12. I also want to remind you that students receiving special educations in early childhood will attend daily, Monday through Friday. In preparation for the arrival of families and students, early childhood staff will greet families at each school's designated arrival and dismissal location, and follow district practices for families and community members. Staff will account for student supervision using a checklist and/or another system to document when a child is under the supervision of OPS, and consequently, when the child returns to their care provider or family member's care. Following guidance from the Centers for Disease Control, procedures have been developed for each of the day's activities to promote health and safety of students and staff. This will be shared at Curriculum Day, with opportunities for teachers to review the plan and practice any, and develop any practices and procedures for their each individual school. Guidance for large group, small group, play, transitions, and rest time are provided and include social distancing and wearing of face coverings. Students will remove face coverings during rest time, as long as the six feet of physical distancing is maintained. Extensive procedures for hand washing, use of face coverings, diapering, table washing, sanitation of materials and equipment, along with guidance for referral of students to the health office, are also written. This summer, a team of exceptional teachers and instructional coaches wrote new curriculum guides and lesson plan templates for the Family 3-2 instructional model and the 100% remote model. These documents are finalized and will be shared with teachers at Curriculum Day. We know that outdoor play is crucial for young children's development, and it is recommended that outdoor play occur daily when weather permits. Travel to and from the outdoor area will follow school procedures, and multiple classrooms will not be allowed on the playground at the same time, nor will they be allowed to play on installed playground equipment. In preparation for the Family 3-2 family schedule and remote instruction, a team of summer school kindergarten teachers and tech support teachers met with a group of early childhood teachers to create documents for the use of iPads in early childhood classrooms, following best practices for early childhood development. The experience of the summer school staff provided strong guidance on how to embed the use of iPads in the classroom setting. They developed a series of recommended procedures, along with videos, to instruct teachers on troubleshooting the use of iPads. This team also reviewed OPS apps and developed suggested lesson activities for the use of iPads. In addition, guidance on how and when the iPads will be used in both the Family 3-2 and 100% remote learning model was developed. Apps approved by the district are loaded on the apps to promote basic literacy and math concepts and skills, along with apps that allow children to hear stories read aloud, such as from the website Sora, which is used by OPS library services. Language and literacy will be the primary role of the iPad when students are fully remote. Teachers will provide synchronous instruction, following the remote learning guidance documents and recommended time allotments. In addition to instruction, the iPads will allow teachers to connect with families to strengthen relationships when students are in a fully remote learning setting. Early childhood teachers are to re, excuse me, early childhood families are to receive two home visits per year, per the Nebraska Department of Ed Rule 11. As we begin this school year, teachers will contact families and conduct this first home visit remotely. This will be either through Teams or through a phone call. I want to thank you once again for your full support of the early childhood program. I'm incredibly proud of the teachers, paraprofessionals, family support staff, office staff, and teaching and learning consultants in their efforts to support our youngest OPS students. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Scotty?
I have a number of instructional questions, and my first one really does relate to early childhood, so I think in the past, the technology usage has been something like 15 minutes a day, is that correct?
I don't remember that specific guideline, I can tell you what guidelines are from other organizations, but the most important thing to remember is some of the guidance that was written by NACY back in 2012, recommended from the Academy of Pediatrics, a reduced number of minutes, but NACY has come out to also say that for digital literacy to be a very important component, especially for children that don't have adequate resources, and in a district like ours without need students, we want to make sure they develop those literacy skills with digital technology.
So how do we ensure when they're home with their iPads, that that iPad doesn't become a babysitter? Do we have time limits on it? Because I know?
Right.
When my kids were younger, and certainly, I didn't let them have technology much before third grade, but I really kept a monitor on how many minutes they could use, and had systems set up? What are we doing?
Well, yeah, no, that's a very good question. So, under the guidance of Chief Academic Officer Melissa Colmine, and my Director of Elementary Education, Donna Dobson, the three of us have sat down and have looked at the time allotments very, very carefully, and I want you to be rest assured that we use the iPad not as a teacher, but as an instructional tool, and so the minutes are very carefully thought out, so that it will replicate what the students are experiencing in the day. So when the day begins, and we have opening, and we have singing, and we read a story, that's how the iPad will be used, so the student will actually have that type of access, and then when the child would go- And then when the child would go into their typical interest areas or their center areas, then the teacher won't necessarily be instructing that time. We've developed learning activities to replicate the center time, so the children will be involved in that as well. So we're very mindful and very careful about the use of the minutes on the iPad.
What about, what about when they're at home?
Well, that, that's what, well, that's what we're going to do, is we're starting out, teaching the children how to use that iPad, and then we have guidance with the families so that they realize what their responsibilities are. And as I said earlier, we have the home visit, and so at the home visit at the beginning of the year, those expectations will be shared with families.
So is there any way for us to monitor how many minutes are being, those iPads are being used while at home to be able to say, okay, maybe we need to redirect here, or if, if we're seeing six hours a day?
Sure.
Right, or eight hours a day?
Well, and I think the one thing that we have to remember is IMS has been very mindful and thoughtful about the types of apps that are loaded on these iPads. The other thing we have to realize, too, is that how we teach the children to use the iPad is how they're going to use the iPad. So I have complete faith in the early childhood team and the teachers. They know what's best, and one of our colleagues spoke earlier to you about her passion for early childhood. And what I'll say to you is that teachers are the ones that make instructional decisions. So they are the ones that are going to be modeling and teaching them in class how to use the iPad appropriately. So the mindset and the message is going to be, this is not a toy. This is not an entertainment device. This is your learning tool. This is how you engage with your teacher. This is how you engage with your friends. This is how you stay connected and connected with your teacher throughout the day. Did that answer your question?
I hope so. I, I, I am, I'm a little bit concerned about that, but we'll see how it goes.
May I also, may I also say, though, sorry to interrupt?
No, it's okay.
But one of the things that was the hardest for me last semester, and I'll try not to get emotional. We need to make sure that all of our students have access. And I listened to many, many teachers voice extreme concern because they had no way to get a hold of their families. Families didn't have phones. Families didn't, or if they had phones, their phone numbers changed. They didn't have any way at all. And I was thrilled when the district decided to allow a hotspot because that is one way for us to get access to those families. I'm very concerned when I listen to the news, and I worry about the community, and I worry about those children. I take full responsibility for them. And I, I'm so grateful that the district decided to allow us to have that access because that's our way to check on the well-being of those children.
Oh, and I, I don't disagree. I think we have to, we have to make sure they're operating. To the point you just brought up about the hotspots, what happens if, because I drive through areas of Omaha when I'm even on my way home where I can't use my phone and those kinds of things. If there's not accessibility there, does the hotspot still work there? How does that work?
It still works. I think it's, under the T-Mobile contract, because I think is what their contract is. The way the device is, I think anyone can connect from their phone to the hotspot on the computer.
Even if there's not connectivity in the area, right?
There should be connectivity if, if we're using the state contract with T-Mobile.
Well, I mean, there are just parts of town that don't have it as well.
Unless you have a spread, and then you don't have connectivity.
That, that's what I'm curious about. I, I don't know how that works.
And I would say that would be-
We have been working to identify, thank you, Georgia, first of all. Very nicely done. But we've been working with some of our partners to make sure we can identify any areas that don't. For example, 144th and Dodge never works for me. So that, those are the kinds of things that we're making sure that we have. We have a philanthropic partner who has committed to making sure that we don't have any dead spots. And so if we identify any of those, we certainly would make sure that we work to ameliorate those.
Thank you. No, that's good to know. On the alternative curriculum, I'm just thinking about some of our speakers tonight where she mentioned the concerns, and I felt that passion for her students. What are we doing to help prevent the spread with those younger people who are at high risk since they're all going to be in class during the day, as she mentioned?
You know, I, I think your question has to do with the alternative special education program. I don't think I can speak to that. That is a specialized special education program.
What is, I don't understand the question.
So when the teacher spoke earlier, she talked about having all of her students back and students being half.
Yeah, I, I do recall. We'll continue to do all the things that we will, you know, be doing hand washing. Even with students who have accommodations for face masks, there are, and I sent those, I think I sent those to the board today, the different accommodations. It doesn't mean that they aren't going to be, we aren't going to make other arrangements to make sure that we can keep people safe. And so we've been looking at the size of classrooms. We also look at the number of students in, in some of the classes whose parents are going to have opted for remote. We've had a lot more, a lot of those students, especially at one of our schools, who have opted for remote because the students have so many underlying conditions that they're concerned about their health and safety.
And I guess I do have a question on, on the remote piece because I, I think one of our speakers tonight was a mom who spoke on behalf of her child talking about needing to take, doing the remote piece, but then also not being able to take honors or AP classes. Have we made arrangements with UNO to allow students who are doing remote to still be able to take that AP course directly through UNO so that they can have some of those opportunities while they're doing the remote piece?
I'll have Mrs. Colmine come up here and talk about the partnership with UNO or Metro.
Yeah, or Midland or any of the other schools.
So we are continuing our dual enrollment in our partnerships with Metro Community College, Midlands, and also UNO. UNO Middle College will be up and running as well.
So can a student who's taking remote, and, and I had one call me this week to say, hey, I'm not allowed to take honors or AP, just the basic classes, can that student take the college class through UNO and allow that to be on their transcript as far as dual if they're 100% remote students?
So right now, if they're part of the OPS Remote Learning Program, they will have limited courses. And so that is dependent on the teachers that we have available.
But if they're taking it 100% through, say, UNO?
If they're in the OPS Remote Learning Program, they will not be taking classes through UNO.
Okay. They could do it on their own outside of OPS, I assume, if they wanted to do that? I mean, I'm just thinking about-
They, they could. Metro offers what they call a kickstart, and that is something that has been offered to the students on their own going into the third year this year.
Okay. I, I'm just thinking about the mom who spoke on behalf of her child tonight.
Absolutely.
And students who have contacted me about that concern. And I know Mr. Pearlman asked the question, and I've gotten the question from more than one person this week on those third quarter grades from this 1920 year for students. Those show up on their transcripts, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So there's no, they shouldn't be concerned that when, if you're a junior and you're doing your college applications, those grades will be there?
Absolutely, yes.
Right? They're just not figured in your GPA. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. So I have, and, and I guess I'm just thinking also, sorry, and I don't know if you're the person to ask, answer these questions or not, but, and I, I've had an email with Dr. Logan this week, so I know some of the people who spoke tonight, and I have had, and most of them were my constituents, and I've got a lot of constituents contacting me about sports. So I know that at the last board meeting, Mr. Yubank said we would get an update at this board meeting. I think we're not ready for that. It's my, it's my understanding from Dr. Logan. So some of the questions I have, I think, when we would, when will we be ready? And then student transportation is one of the questions I have on if students aren't in school that day but they're participating in a sport, how would they get there? And then will we roll out information? I know I read about Bellevue and their preparedness for marching bands that are going to take place, assuming they have a football season during football. How will we handle that? The fans that will be included, whether it's parents, are we going to base it off of numbers? And when those pieces of information will be able to be rolled out?
So we are currently planning for every possible scenario, and as each day comes, new scenarios come. And I'll let Dr. Logan speak if she would like to further.
We do not currently have a decision on that. We wanted to give it as much time as possible to have an opportunity. We have a lot of rocks to move just to have children in seats next week, and that's kind of where we are. So we do not have an, an answer on that. I'm sure that's what, not what families want. But I don't know if anybody at this table would feel that we were prepared to give an answer based on what we've heard here tonight and the feedback that we've gotten so far. And I think if that answer were to come out, it would not be what any of the people here wanted. So we're trying to give it as much time as possible and see where we are.
Okay, thank you.
I would hope when that decision is made that we are in consultation with our other school districts in the metro. And I have faith in that decision from you, Dr. Logan. And up next, Mrs. Crackey, and then after Mrs. Crackey, Ms. Cassidy.
I believe that in the past, students who took the AP or some kind of classes in conjunction with Burke, they were transported there for that class and then back to school, just as they had been transported down here for classes in the career center. But I don't know if the career center will function that way. But those students during the day when the classes are offered at Burke, that they can take and then do a, dual support for that when they go to college, are they going to have to provide their own transportation in order to do that?
So the students at Burke and other high schools that are taking AP and dual enrollment courses, they currently take those in their school. They are not transported for that.
They're not going to, you know, for any of those in their really advanced children. I've known in the past they've done that.
We offer AP and dual enrollment in all of our seven high schools. We do have some additional programs and opportunities. One is called the UNO Middle College, but those students are actually enrolled in that program.
Well, that's, I think I'm trying to say that because they already paid some money there, too, so that they could do that and then have those hours on their slate when they go to college.
Yes, they, if they take the dual enrollment class or if they take the AP class, depending on the score that they receive, that would transfer over to a college credit. They do need to check with the receiving college to see if the college would accept that credit. Each college has their own way of accepting credits.
I'm still remembering them going to UNO part of the day or something. I don't know how they got there. But AP, some of the students that I recall doing that, but maybe I'm wrong.
Thank you, Mrs.
I, I do understand what you're saying, Mrs. Crackey, because we, there, we had, there was a model where students just went to the college and took their class to, before dual enrollment was more widespread. Children would go directly to the college and take their college class. That's what you're talking about. Because we have so many students now, we have some different ways of offering it where children don't necessarily have to leave their school, but they still get the college credit while they're sitting in the class. The teacher has to be specially certified in order to do that.
Well, I, I guess I'm thinking of very, very advanced math students.
Yep.
That they don't provide it there at school, and that was why I was thinking of that because I can recall Daddy Kareen.
Yes, they do provide it at the school. Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Crackey. Mrs. Cassidy.
I want to get back to the early childhood. Thank you for the presentation, by the way. So I've had so many people say to me that this age group particularly is, they're worried about, like, they won't be able to do face coverings, they won't be able to social distance. But I disagree. I think that this age group is, they thrive on conformity and discipline, and I think that we're going to be pleasantly surprised. But are you, are we, are we feeling that this age group, well, first of all, is this age group getting the iPads? I know that we switched the, we switched the groups. Are they getting them by the time school starts? Or are they not?
No, you may recall there was some, there was some discussion about not even ordering them last time. We were ordering, we did, was approved, and we are ordering the iPads. I don't, we don't have a delivery date. But I certainly will provide it. As soon as we get, get an update, I'll certainly will provide it.
That's right. I forgot last meeting. It seems so long ago that we had that meeting. So are we, I, I get kind of worried about this group with having to have in-person instruction with how to use their iPad. In-person means? Okay, so I want to back up because you were asking me about the face covering. So you've got your answer to that question. So you want to go now to one-to-one instruction in the classroom? Well, one of the things that was a real gift for me is I had the opportunity to work with summer school. And I got to meet some of the tech teachers that taught, and they're a wonderful bunch. And the kindergarten teachers and them, and myself, had an engaging conversation of what they learned over summer. And so then I grabbed some of my colleagues from early childhood, one of whom is sitting in this room, and joined on a conversation and said, what did you learn? What do we need to know? And they were such sage people. Start slow, start simple, and embed it in instruction immediately. And so, you know, it seems very, for those of us that use technology every day, it's hard for us to think about how to water that down. But that's why I value the teacher's voice because teachers daily know how to do that. So there's a lot of routines and practices that we're going to start from day one, looking at just how to mute and how to turn on the camera and how to be using it engaged in that way through active participation. We're not going to be teaching children to access apps for hours at a time. That's not the purpose. The purpose of it is so that when they're at home, when they are in school, they're learning how to use the device so that when they go home, they're going to be able to actively engage with their teacher. So what if we, what if these students don't get the devices, though, until later, but we're already remote? Yeah, so that's what happened to us last semester. Same thing, okay. So, yeah, the same thing that we did last semester. And so the teachers had a newsletter, and they, I hate to use the word newsletter. The teachers used a form, and the form replicated the different areas of the student's day. And they gave suggested activities for the child to use at home or in childcare to replicate the study that we're having in school. So one of the summer curriculum writing projects was a group of early childhood teachers that came up with extensive documents to provide ideas and examples of what could be written into those plans for childcare and for at-home. So that's what would continue. We also had a lot of teachers that pre-recorded lessons, and they use the materials in their home because one thing we want to make sure is we have equitable instruction. So we do want to make assumptions that some families have the same materials that other families have. So we're very mindful of that as well. Well, it sounds like everything has been very thoughtful and- Well, it's, it's a team effort. There's a lot of people that have worked at all grade levels, and we learn from each other, so. Well, thank you for your efforts. Thank you.
I think we have one more question for you. Dr. Holman?
Hi, thank you so much for your presentation.
You're welcome.
I know that typically our early childhood students are, they eat in a family-style setting. Can you tell us what that might look like now?
Yes, good question. We will not be using family-style meals this year. Even though it's a requirement of Head Start, and because we use title funding for ESSA, we must follow Head Start performance standards, but we will not be following family-style meals. We're following the guidance from the Health and Nutrition Office for meals. Yeah.
Thank you so much for your presentation, and thank you everyone that presented on this item. I know it was a lot, for a lot of people to digest, and you can go, if I'm correct, Mr. Maskell, you can go to the district website under Communications and get all this information in format and share it with your prospective communities, as well as read up beyond the changes that we have ongoing throughout the district. Also, thank you so much, teachers, for coming to the board meeting. Appreciate it. Up next, we have item I-2B, which is the presentation on LB-31, the legislative study findings. And we have one of the greatest board members of all time, Ms. Linda Richards.
Wow. That's a heck of an introduction, Mr. President. Thank you. Good evening, Board, President Snow, board members, Dr. Logan. I was asked to come this evening to present to the Board the summary of the study of the transfer of management of OSERS to PERB. As the Board recalls, beginning of this session, the legislature embarked on the, it's- on the, it seems like it was a decade ago, doesn't it, in starting? But they embarked on the study, a passage of LB-31. And so, tonight, what I want to do for you is do a brief overview of the report. And then my hope for you this evening is that this will help to begin some conversations at the board level. Earlier today, I did facilitate the Better Together Coalition Group in a meeting to cover this exact topic, to begin soliciting from stakeholders their responses, their questions, their concerns with regard to the study and its findings. And so, I'm pleased to be with you here this evening to do the same. So, the Nebraska Legislature did, through LB-31, require that there would be consultation with the Retirement System Committee, OSERS, and the Omaha Public Schools and other stakeholders to prepare a work plan that identified the tasks, process, costs, and timeline involved in transferring the management of OSERS to Purb. The study was conducted at the cost of the Omaha Public Schools, and the study was submitted to the Legislature on June 30th, 2020. There is scheduled, as of just, I think, last week, a hearing date. So, if you will mark your calendars, the hearing date for LB-31 will be Friday, September 18th at 1:30. We'll talk a little bit about that at the end here. The work plan did include providing for a comparison of the annual OSERS administration costs to the estimated costs for the Purb to manage the OSERS plan. It also identified necessary tasks and costs to transfer management from OSERS to Purb. There are necessary statutory changes that will be needed, and it identified those as well. Establishment of timelines for completion of the identified tasks was also included. And I know you have a copy of this report. I am trying to give the salient points and the high-level summary for you, but the report itself is extensive and does cover all of these tasks that are listed here. Empers also contracted with an outside consulting firm named Linear Solutions, Inc. They are a management IT consulting firm that specializes in pension business. There was an evaluation about the system and the data transfer requirements, along with establishing these timelines and cost estimates to accomplish the transfer of administration. There were several key takeaways, and I want to briefly go through those for you this evening. There will be a 23-month timeframe to initially integrate OSERS into Empers. The timeline established does have a kickoff date of October 2021, and a go-live transition of management in September of '23. Support for integration would continue through August of '23. There is a cost estimate for IT and systems implementation, and that begins in the year following the transition. That estimate is $4.2 million. There are operational costs for Empers for both years one and two that are estimated in the study. Year one being $899,109, and in second year, $835,191. OSERS does remain a separate and distinct retirement system, meaning it is not merged with the Nebraska School Employee Retirement System. OPS remains responsible for the unfunded liability of OSERS. And where possible, the study suggests that the administration of OSERS by Empers would be conformed with and follow the administrative functions and systems of the other retirement plans that Empers administers. As you recall, example of that would be the State Patrol. The administrative functions for OSERS would be performed by Empers in Lincoln. OSERS would not have an office. Legal governance and oversight of OSERS will be by the Purb, the Public Employees Retirement Board. As I stated, there would be legislation that would need to be included to expand the number of representatives on Purb to include an OSERS representative. There is an impact for OPS, obviously. OPS retains the responsibility for funding the OSERS liabilities. OPS and the Board of Trustees will continue to be legally responsible for all conduct and actions that were taken with respect to OSERS prior to the full transition to Empers and the Purb. It's also recommended that OPS and the Board of Trustees indemnify and hold the state of Nebraska, Empers, Purb harmless from any conduct or administration prior to the completion of the transition. Now, stated with regard to the study and the findings, the LB-31 hearing on the September 18th at 1:30, committee will still be functioning under COVID procedures. So, as a result, there will be limited space. Senator Coulterman's office is asking, and that's a part of the reason that I'm here with you tonight, and have met with the Better Together Coalition, to solicit information, questions in advance, trying to determine what those thoughts might be, so that we can facilitate good feedback to the committee, to Senator Coulterman, but also to give him an idea of those who might be interested in testifying on the bill, so that we can help facilitate that happening in this time of limited access. So, what I would like to hear from, from you, Board, this evening, are some of the questions, after you've had some time to review this, some questions that you might have, and/or concerns that you want to express, and so that I can take a few notes and understand some of those thoughts. If the Board would choose, through your legislative committee process, which I know you do have, Mr. President, to ascertain that information and provide that to, to me to compile, I'd be glad to also use that as the facilitation of those questions.
I understand. So, what we'll do first is, I'll open it up for questions just at the table, and then we'll go from there and see if we have to loop back before your meeting with Senator Coulterman. Real quick, when's your meeting, when's the meeting with Senator Coulterman's office again?
So, right now, it is scheduled for the 27th of this month. We were waiting for this session to come to an end.
Okay, perfect. Mrs. Gotti, thank you.
Thank you for this succinct and very well put together analysis of this study. So, I just want to share with board members, I think, in my mind, it was seven years ago this month that this conversation started regarding getting as much moved to Lincoln as we possibly could. And obviously, a lot has happened with our investments since that time. But one of the key things that we started talking about seven years ago was the, the need to move that component of OSERS to the Purb Board. And if you look at the analysis, I think we're looking at maybe, even though there's a cost in each following year, the savings is about $150,000 over what we would be paying if it stayed here. So, in my memory of the things that have been concerns in the past, the number one concern from staff and teachers was always the, the fact that we had an OSERS office, and that they could call and go in, and that there would be retirement seminars. Some of those may have been operated outside of what the Nebraska Investment Council would advise for how to do things. So, I think the one question I would just ask is, would it be possible for the Nebraska Investment Council, not Purb, but the Nebraska Investment Council, to open an office in the metro area, which would serve not only OPS, but it would serve Millard, and Westside, and Ralston, and other districts, for staff who are getting ready to retire, aren't really sure, what does this mean? I don't get the whole pension thing, and that they could come in and meet with a person if that was necessary. So, that would probably be the number one question that I heard from years of testifying in Lincoln, that staff always pushed back on when we would talk about these things. And then the other is just that there would be that smooth component to bring someone from OSERS into that Purb Board, and that, that that transition would be well thought through as far as those issues that are a little bit different for OSERS than they are for all the other different pension funds, or, you know, some of those are alternative too, to way they, it's not 100% pension. But maybe thinking just about the teachers, and how that's a little bit different. From the board's standpoint, I think we should be grateful that there's the opportunity to have one oversight board that would have same auditors, the same actuary, and really reviewing those things in a similar way, even though our investments are still different. I would anticipate by 2023, we'll start seeing some wind down of some of those alternatives, which are about a third of our portfolio. And hopefully, whatever happens to those happens. But hopefully, we would see some similarity in the investment profile between the two systems. So, I think in talking to Purb Board members, I think they have a lot of training, and they do a lot of things that maybe we haven't done in the past. So, I'm excited to see this moving forward. I'm very thankful the study is done, and the cost savings will end up being a benefit to the district in the end, even from a liability standpoint of having our own board that may or may not follow all the same parameters that Purb does today.
Thank you, Mrs. Gotti.
Mr. Pearlman.
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight. Good to see you.
Good to see you, too.
Um, I'll be honest, I haven't had a chance to fully digest this. So, just taking a broad look at this. And I think I always ask this question. When we talk about combining these things, it's just the administration of it, right?
Correct. You currently have your investments being handled by the Investment Council. That, that action's already taken place.
Now, is there a, a board that works with the Investment Council, or is it, or not?
Yeah, there's an Investment Council, correct.
So, what's the interplay between that and the Public Employee Board?
I don't have that answer, Mr. Pearlman. I don't know how those function together.
Mrs. Gotti can answer that question?
I, I can help you with that a little bit. The Nebraska Investment Council, which is a little bit different, most states don't have two boards, or from what I've been told don't. The Nebraska Investment Council handles all of the investment activities that happen with the various pensions, and similar to the county employees, they handle all those investments. The Purb Board itself makes the decisions on things like rate of return, expected rate of return, set at seven and a half percent. They make the decisions based on who the auditors are, the actuaries, how they make sure that the person who is eligible, and whether or not all of the state statutes are followed on that person receiving the retirement that they believe they're expected to receive. So, they work more on that component of it, the state statute side of the retirement benefits and calculations of those and all of that, and ensuring that everyone's paid appropriately, and that the systems that are doing the paying, so all of the technology that goes into the payment systems is done. So, today, we pay through the Omaha Public Schools. The Finance Department is actually the one that runs all the checks and handles all of that, even though OSERS itself says, yes, we approve that all these people should receive a retirement. They turn it over to Mr. Roberts' team, and he's the one that actually makes sure that all of the checks go out and everything is handled. That component that goes from Omaha Public Schools of us running the checks would go to the Purb Board, and they would make sure that those direct deposits or checks are distributed, that the money is received in to make the payments. So, that's, that's really what the Purb side handles. They get the money from the Investment Council, and then they're kind of the operations, maybe, if you think about it, operations versus investment side.
Okay.
And so, that would be the board that, that is recommended that through legislation, there'd be an additional seat for an OSERS, for this entity's representation to be on.
And has the Better Together Coalition made a decision whether or not they support this elimination of OSERS and transferring things to Purb?
Today was our first time to reconvene and review the report, so similar to what you're doing this evening. And so, they have been tasked with, and have actually asked to, take it to their respective boards. So, OEA, OEA Retired, the individual stakeholder entities, review that, this report with them, solicit questions, gain feedback, list concerns, bring that back to our group. That will occur the second meeting here in, shortly after September 2nd. It would be the time that we would be reconvening for Better Together, because that would give all of those entities time to meet with their respective boards. Mr. Pearlman.
And presumably, Purb wouldn't want to take on this extra task for free. So, does the funding of that come out of fees from the investments, presumably?
So, that is a component of this that has been analyzed, and you'll find that in detail in the report when you get a chance to, to dig in on it. But it does spell out the operational costs, and walks you through year by year on those.
And I think, I think OSERS has to pay for that.
Correct. But it does also isolate the costs of what those look like operationally year by year. Back to Mrs. Gotti's point about the savings and where that's reflected.
Right. Because today, we're paying for those costs through OSERS investments. It'll be $150,000 maybe-ish less, once it gets moved, recognizing that there's that $4.2 million of payment that needs to happen.
Initially.
Initially, to get all the technology components. Because our systems are very, very different today in how they operate, so we can't integrate one into the other. And that's part of the reason for the additional cost. And we've talked about that for years, but we just don't operate the same way.
And is it accurate to say that other teacher-retirement systems in Nebraska are in the Nebraska Investment Council?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
I think, I think OSERS is the only, of a rare bird in the country, that has its separate.
One of four.
One of four.
One of four now. It used to be five or six, but it's reduced.
One of four. Thank you. Any other questions from the Board? Well, thank you so much, Mrs. Richard, for presenting to us.
Absolutely.
Hopefully, we'll, we'll start putting our heads together and get you more feedback before the meeting on the 27th. And also, thank you, Mrs. Gotti, for providing your input tonight.
Sounds great. Thank you very much, Board.
All righty. Well, this is the sad part of the meeting. No laughing, okay. All right. Dr. Holman.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel, legal advice, real estate, and negotiations.
There's a motion to go on a closed session by Dr. Holman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ryan. Roll call, please. Crackey?
Aye. Yes.
Pearlman?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snite?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Gotti?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Nine aye? Nine aye. Motion passes. Just to remind the Board, we would be meeting on the fourth floor for closed session to remain proper social distancing. So, when you get on the fourth floor, just go straight to the back hall. And then that's where we'll meet, and then we'll come back down to adjourn. I need at least five board members to come back down with me to adjourn after closed session. And I'll read my script now. Let me remind the Board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel, legal advice, real estate, and negotiations. Let the record reflect the board went into closed session at 10:55.
Are we on? All right, let the record reflect the board came out of closed session at 11:29. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.